Look at these statistics, when you are over 80 percent funded ratio.
Well, when we made those changes too, they told us it's going to take a couple of years to catch up. So I think now that, you know, we're seeing the effect of some of those changes on the plans which, you know.
We will continue to monitor.
Helping the city contribution go down.
We will continue to monitor. What was telling to me was with police and fire, we talked about going to FRS. And actually, if the police and fire went to FRS, they'd get a pay raise. Because instead of kicking in eight, nine and a half percent, they're only kicking in three percent. So they get an automatic pay raise. But the city's contribution, you could see with FRS, it's even a little more than what we're putting in now.
Plus the lump sum that we would have to make up the difference.
Well, but others have done it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not something we can't do.
You've got to factor that in.
That's a lot of money. One of the concerns I have in looking at this whole thing is what has, what's the total impact on our ad lorum dollars? How much of our ad lorum dollars actually are we putting in every year? And it's how much of that has increased? So what's the impact on as we budget every year? And it's a, the number has grown up, grown over the years, even though we've done a lot to try to get in control of the plan and it's, obviously, things are improving, but it's still a sizable number.
This year's contribution to fire is going to be half of what was anticipated. This year's contribution to the police pension fund is going to be 25 percent less than what had been anticipated. And the general is going to be approximately 15 percent less than the numbers that we were projected for us over three years ago for a 10-year projection. So I think things are on a good track. I just didn't want to jack, I didn't want Jack and Patrick to take all the credit for all of it.
Well, I understand what you're saying. If the market is good, you know, we're relying on good markets to help provide a good return in, but if the market isn't good, you know, our liability shoots up.
But it was all the other components that made up how we're just.
Right. A higher contribution and all of that.
It was a higher contribution and that, you know, all of those things make the difference.
Wearing the multiplier for new employees. We don't rely on the market. The market is one component. When you rely on the market for the success of your plan, then you're in real trouble.
Absolutely.
We do not do that. We did all those other things in conjunction with that.
And multiplier is still healthy, but.
It is. It is.
Our people deserve it.
It is.
Compared to the corporate world.
Yes, ma'am. Let's move on.
Oh, no, I'm good. Yeah. Logo, logo time.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it and appreciate our committee's work too. Really do appreciate your efforts on this. It is now 12:20 and we still have a couple of items. Do you want to take a break or shall we move on? Push on.
Push on.
Push on. Okay. Happening on the harbor, marketing logo. Who is taking charge?
We have taken over, we have taken over the logo, the trademark. One community, one message has put together, McHale's coming up, but they've put together some design guidelines which we are fine with. We're just asking council to just approve, approve the package. It's in our hands now and we manage.
So you can use either one, the one with the word Florida or the one without Florida? They're both legal to use? The word Florida? Okay.
Both legal. The one community, one message team felt that we needed to have the one with the word Florida in it for situations where we need it to identify where we are.
I like the, I like the Florida.
Do we need a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the happening on the harbor marketing logo as it stands with color, et cetera. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Do you want to see it? I think McHale would like to show it to us.
Please show it to us, McHale.
It's in our hands.
Actually, I've had a restaurateur say I'm anxious to put it on my website. He said, wait till the council approves it.
And we've been encouraging others to use it. We've been using it and the chamber has been using it. We want, we'll get the word out, we want everyone to use it.
Well, and it will be a part of the plan or the one community marketing plan that will encourage people to use it.
Just need to move it down or? There we go. Okay, so one has Florida in it and one does not. Do we want both of them?
Yes.
There is a need. We would probably use the one without the word Florida in most of the time, but there, we felt that we needed to have a version with the word Florida.
I agree.
In case we needed a situation, we were in a situation where we had to identify that we are in Florida.
No, I would, I definitely agree. I'm just wondering, should we have just the one with Florida all the time?
Oh.
But it's already been approved, so never mind.
Yeah, we don't need it all the time. Because if, especially if we're just using it locally.
Well, it looks, it looks great and I like the new swirl. It looks lovely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. And I'm delighted that we're going to be sharing it and it's available for anyone who wants to use it as long as they use it as is, exactly as it is.
Well, and that's the reason why the document that explains the use of the logo and how to use it.
Yep, no, that's important. Thank you. All right, we are now moving on to recommendations from city officers. And we have our city manager and our city manager's evaluation. You received this morning updated, some of the ones were pulled from last year's and it looks like he did better this year than he did last year.
Said he's walking on water.
Yeah, I was going to say Howard, most of my colleagues think you're walking on water and for those who don't, they think if you trip, you're not going to drown anyway.
All right, so we have now again with this evaluation, overall points out of 40 were for Howard was 39.52. We have as a city council authorized as part of our budget process, a 2.3 percent market adjustment and up to 3 percent merit pay increase for all employees who met or exceeded performance expectations. Do we have any recommendation?
He met and exceeded our expectations.
I would like to make that recommendation for Howard.
Second.
We have.
And the mayor? Could we just ask that Dave Dray for the record, that it's retroactive back to the, I believe it's the 29th is when all the other employees received it. You say no?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay. If you say so.
Retroactive back to the 29th.
Just back to where the rest of the employees were treated. Thank you.
Retroactive back to the 29th.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve a combined 5.3 percent increase to our city manager's pay that will be retroactive to?
29th, I believe.
Of September.
Yes.
September 29th.
Would you sweeten another day, an extra day in there?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Howard.
Thank you, Howard.
Thank you, Howard.
Nice job.
Thank you, Howard. Thank you very much.
28.
Oh, another day in there.
Between the 25th and the 30th.
You saw the comments. It's my pleasure working and.
Thank you.
Got more to do.
Well, we'd like to keep you busy.
Yeah, and I keep everyone else busy.
You keep yourself busy too.
That keeps us busy.
Yes, I do. Before we put the walkable communities audio on, two things, two updates. The November 18th meeting is going to be a major item on the November 18th meeting and it is going to be a long presentation. Will be an update, a status report on every single capital project we're doing. Whether it's one cent sales, 1 percent sales tax, utilities.
Okay.
Is this a sharing presentation? Who's doing it?
No, all the departments will do.
Okay.
Who are involved. In other words, you'll hear from urban design, you'll hear from utilities, you'll hear from public works.
Just wanted to know how much.
You'll hear from IT.
Oh, that's great.
And they're preparing it now. That will be November 18th.
When Howard is not here.
When I am not here, but you'll have.
Oh, thanks.
But you will have a new council member here.
We will have somebody in your chair. We just, it'll be a surprise.
Somebody in my chair, yes.
Okay.
Somebody in his chair, yes.
And then on December 2nd, the water authority, the regional water authority will be readdressing the agreement that we approved. Hopefully, they'll be approving it and then it'll be sent on to Swiftmont.
Should we go to that meeting?
We can't.
It's the same day as our council, your council meeting.
We have our council meeting.
Are you going to go, Carol?
Thank you very much.
We have already informed them that we will not be there. We can't be there. It's our council meeting day and that's okay. They can handle it. They're mature people. They can, it's in their hands.
It really is in their hands.
I appreciate Representative Robson. Yeah, I think he made it clear they should make a decision.
And that was at the?
That's what, clear to me anyway.
And that was at the legislative delegation meeting?
Yes.
This is just a three-minute presentation that the mayor requested we just show.
Maybe to do a little bit of a preface, this was the Shark Tank presentation that Howard and Bruce Lashley did at the Walkable Urban Communities Symposium that was held last week. And they had a panel of developers and investors who then questioned them on their promotion. But the slideshow itself was so good, I thought you should hear, should see it. And I would like to talk a little bit about the outcomes of that meeting. I know we have going on a little bit late, but I think it's important as we move forward in our walkable, bikeable community. So please, thank you, McHale. Here we are, if you can see this.
I'm Howard Koenig, city manager of Punta Gorda. And I'm Bruce Lashley, owner of Ford, we're here at our headquarters in Punta Gorda.
Now, you have to understand, things weren't quite set up. They were the first Shark Tank presentation to be given.
Punta Gorda is situated in beautiful Charlotte Harbor in the heart of southwest Florida with easy access off by 75. Punta Gorda Airport provides direct service to 27, 28 cities in the eastern area. 2004's Hurricane Charlie devastated the city. Wipe it out of your mind. What you're about to see is a robust, diverse, small city using partnerships to create the walkable bicycle community. The philosophy, government partners, a catalyst for action. The Punta Gorda pathways is a signature feature of this philosophy. It's a system of multi-use trails connecting all the city's neighborhoods. Forget your bike? Don't worry, there's a free bicycle owner waiting for you. Lashley Park serves as the premier waterfront events location, providing a platform for all types of activity in the heart of city center. Significant streets gained through this and been made to make the community more walkable. In partnership with FEMA, the city mitigated flood risk in the city center area. The city has a rich history dating back to the 1880s. Organizations partner to save, preserve, and rehabilitate many historic structures. Arts and culture are vital part of the city, including 30 murals depicting the city's history. Fisherman's Village attracts up to 1.5 million visitors a year and is now in the midst of a 30-plus million dollar makeover to its retail restaurant and other onsite amenities. City center has a bustling restaurant district with over 30 independent dining opportunities. In the heart of the harbor walk is the event conference center, hosting to variety of small and medium-sized events and conferences. Three hotels offer over 300 rooms in the city to accommodate visitors. And in the vision of new urbanism, the Sunlaw Center offers ground floor retail, class A office, and penthouse residences. Merrill Court Center, a 400 space parking garage, including 17,000 square feet of ground floor commercial space at Flora Gulf Coast University. 75 events, festival city. And this is not a bit possible with all of our partners. And to assist in these redevelopment efforts, the city has four economic development incentives to address business opportunities. And all this surrounds the Crown Jewel. Still to be developed is two city blocks right in the middle of Punta Gorda with all the amenities that Punta Gorda has to offer, water and sewer at the site, two blocks running on UX 41. These two blocks used to be a public supermarket and now is vacant and ready for prime development. So if there's any developers dreaming of having an ultimate site in southwest Florida is available here on Punta Gorda. Thank you.
Now, while that only gave, while that only gave Bruce Lashley 15 seconds. He did take up over 10 minutes of questions and answers. It was all devoted to Marketplace, the former Marketplace property. And the panelists liked the city and you want to give your impressions.
Yes, Bruce, do you mind? Thank you, Bruce, too, for participating. It was excellent.
Yes, thank you. Awesome.
Yeah, first I want to thank Mayor Freeman and Howard for inviting me to be a part of this. And I guess Howard approached me about three or four weeks ahead of time and we actually had two meetings on it, kind of a practice where the mayor was kind of our coordinator and made sure we stayed straight and said the right things. And we had city staff evaluating us and helping us with the slide in. And Howard's assistant was amazing putting the slide presentation together. So it was a lot of help.
And Mitchell and McHale.
Thank you so much. I was, I was, I was very, the day before they had to do the event was the day that we turned the Cheney Brothers building over the Cheney Brothers. So that last, that week was a very busy week for me. So it really fell on Howard's shoulder to do this and the staff and I appreciate the help.
It actually fell on Mitchell Austin and McHale.
McHale mainly. But no, but it was, it was really a blast. It was a lot of fun. We really, we were the guinea pigs as the mayor said. We were the first ones up. I don't know if you guys could tell, but Howard couldn't see the monitor that had the slides, so he didn't know which slide he was on. They put it right in front of this six-foot tall podium and we're both, well, I was standing and I could see it, but Howard couldn't see it. And so, and when I went to speak, the same thing, you couldn't see the timer that they gave you, you couldn't see anything. So Howard's trying to click and talk at the same time and, and we were, I actually went and told the monitors, the people afterwards, that they need to change it and they did for the, for the third and fourth person up. But, but no, I tell you what, besides being involved in the friendly Shark Tank and promoting Punta Gorda, we went there to promote Punta Gorda to the state of Florida. Last year when they did this, they didn't invite, they only invited Lee County cities and CRAs and communities. This year, they invited Naples and Punta Gorda, they stretched out a little more. And it was really a great showing for Punta Gorda to be able to show. We had the best-looking brochures down at the tables. We definitely, I went back and watched, I seen three of the shows and the three I seen, we definitely were the most prepared was the slideshow. And I felt really good with Howard because I know Howard is solid as rock and I knew Howard had the big part to get the slideshow. So I figured it was kind of hard for me to screw up my 15 seconds, you know? But besides, besides the Shark Tank being fun and highlighting Punta Gorda and highlighting properties for sale, it was a very learning experience. I, you know, I was there for like five hours. I left and I came back for the last hour and a half. And it was very, very, I recommend that all the city council, whatever staff they can, and I'm going to recommend the county commissioners when they have this again next year, go down there. Because they had some of the best planners around speak about walkable, you know, urban communities, bicycle communities. And what I, what I found out, what I really learned from there is that the city of Punta Gorda is about 11 years ahead of most of the cities in the state of Florida, actually in the Southeast United States. We are years ahead. The other cities that were talking about what it was going to do, that's all they were doing was talking. They didn't have anything yet. They, someone had renderings of what they planned on doing. You know, Howard and his staff have been putting this together since 2007, 2008, but basically ever since the hurricane hit. And the other thing I learned is that the cities that are doing well are the ones that have a master plan. The ones that sat down and they developed the master plan, Barbara was out here, she learned this too, we talked about, but the ones that did a master plan and then every two or three years went back to it and updated it. And I think it's kind of like today in the city council meeting you're talking about with this, sort of bicycle league, where you're kind of going back and updating your master plan. And Tom Cowan and I had, talked about adding more things to our master plan and stuff. But I think the master plan that gives us direction, so one council doesn't start something, the next council drops the ball, things continue on. So I would encourage the master plan going on. And, but it was, it was a really good day. I mean, for me to take a whole day out of my time and go sit all the time, I didn't think I'd be able to do it. But I actually went back for the ending of it because I really, I thought it was worthwhile and I think next year we all should try to be there.
Bruce, what were some of the takeaways that you got from the, from all of the information?
Well, you know, what they really kept stressing was is that these walkable communities is all ages. It brings the young people, it brings the families in, it brings them in, but it's also for, it's all ages. It's not like we're just going after retirement age or we're just going after families. All ages love, love the walkable communities. And it also, it brings up the taxable real estate values for the property. So the city will end up collecting more property taxes. It brings up, usually when you have a walkable community, you have, you have higher density, you have more multifamily. And the multifamily kind of makes up for the urban sprawl. You got areas that's of light development, that's not much going on. Then you have your downtown where you have some multifamily and more of a mixed-use multifamily combination, your property taxes increase. I mean, they had graphs, Carolyn, remember, that spiked in the cities where they had a combination of multifamily and restaurants and retail and say loyal offices, all in the same blocks. The property taxes just spiked 10, 20, 30 times higher than the other blocks that didn't have the mixed use. And they really are pushing mixed-use development. And I think Punta Gorda has got a big head start on most, most of these communities.
One of the things that I found, and again, you know, intuitively, you know this, but someone has to kind of push it out there in front of you, it's that rooftops bring retail. And we have been focusing on retail and not on bringing the rooftops downtown, whether it's, you know, apartments, condos. And again, they were talking about density. So they're not talking about big sprawling, very expensive kinds of condos or apartments. They're talking about one-bedroom, you know, small apartments that bring in the people, bring in the singles, bring in the people that are downsizing, bring, and you get them walking and you get them downtown.
I mean, a lot of the developments were less than one-acre lots that they were talking about.
That's right.
Small one-acre lots with a 12-unit, you know, four-story, you know, multifamily with some retail, maybe a Starbucks on the first floor and some apartments upstairs, you know?
So it's, but it was very, very valuable. So the videos that Mitchell sent to you are from the same speakers that spoke at the conference, or at least three of them. What I also found is that, obviously, we know walkable cities make healthier individuals. I mean, you're walking, you're biking. But they also said it was the answer to climate change. And you start thinking about it, less vehicles, better air, right? But they did say the challenge would be affordable. You know, that the challenge is affordable housing. And how do we incorporate that then into our thinking about the mix? Again, they were pushing on the retail grocery stores, you know, follow rooftops. One of the suggestions, and which was from Arlington, Virginia, and they said that new movie theaters now include restaurants with leather seats and easy access to order via an electronic menu. But I was thinking, I think I was in Delaware and they had that kind of a thing. And we came to town on a sailboat, right? So we're looking for things to do. And they said, oh, go to this theater. I mean, it was like people tell you, because you can go to a movie, have something to eat and drink and enjoy a movie. So there's some ideas there that we might want to float around. But the density was a big, was a big issue. Nancy?
Yeah, I was, I listened to this and then I watched the clips that you forwarded. One of the person referenced, he was from Miami and referenced his colleagues in Miami. And I was hoping he would have mentioned Jaime Correa because that's, Jaime Correa was from the University of Miami that helped us develop the citizens' master plan, which was very much driven by new urbanism, which is what this is all about.
That's right.
It's, I think our, our community has been following those principles for many years, which has helped guide us.
Well, I was very proud to be there and be with, with, you know, Carolyn and Howard because we were well-prepared, our city is well-prepared. So the other people just had renderings of what they hoped to be and they had more questions of the panel, like what should they be doing, instead of answering the questions to the panel. Because they were, we were just miles ahead of the other communities and I was very proud to be part of the Punta Gorda. And I want to thank Carolyn and Howard for asking me again.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Bruce. A question for Bruce. What did you think about the recommendation from one of the developers about partnering with the developer to, because I know they talked a lot about the price of the property.
Right, right.
And there was one that made a suggestion about partnering to come up with something.
Well, we, you know, we basically answered and said, if there's a developer wants to come in and they want the landowner to be a, you know, part of the deal, we would, we'd look at that. You know, someone, one of them said, well, what if, would you be, you know, would you consider staying in as an investor? And we said, yes, you know, and we, and they said, and then they, they were, how much you own, how much you own the property? I like zero. You know, I mean, so we're, we're a good investor. We already have the property, let's, you come on board. But, but you know, I was, I was, I thought it was funny when there's like five or six of them there and there was one that was really stuck on price and the other one was kind of stuck on price. It was like two of them. But, I mean, but if I'm, if, if I'm interested in someone's property, I'm not going to tell them it's worth their asking price. I'm going to, I'm always going to tell them they're asking too much. I mean, you don't sit there and say, oh, it's a great deal, you know? And, I mean, so, I mean, the price thing wasn't even an issue because, I mean, I grew up, if someone's got something selling that's a really good price, I still going to offer them less money. You're not going to get any cheaper than you offer. And so, I mean, I don't blame the people for asking about price, you know? And, I mean, if they follow up next week and call us with a phone call and say they have a great idea for downtown Punta Gorda, then, then the whole thing was a huge success, you know? But even if we, I mean, we basically have offers on the table right now, but we're not really sure if we like what the offers are for. We're, and, you know, we've, we've got, we've got a real solid offer on the table right now, but we're not really sure, you know, if, if it's going to go anywhere right now. I mean, it's a kind of a confidential thing, but, I mean, there's offers floating around. But I looked at three things, is, you know, Howard want to get the city marketplace property and other vacant properties out to the world that they're available. And, and I met a lot of the people afterwards and I talked to them about other sites in Punta Gorda also available. And, but that was one, that was one gold. But the other gold was just to showcase Punta Gorda to our neighbors. A lot of these people in Naples, even though they're so close, they've never even been to Punta Gorda. I, I meet people in the business world every day and, and the ones that have been to Punta Gorda love it and they come once or twice a month. They, the ones that, once they've been here, they come back. And then the third part of this thing that was a win was, it was very educational. Like I said earlier, I, I got a lot out of that day and I, I think we should get as many people we can down again next year. You know, but.
One of the, one of the speakers, Jeff Speck, who was, I guess, one of the third speakers, he was talking about the four things that are needed to get people to walk or ride. They have, to have a reason to walk. They have to feel safe. They have to be comfortable, in other words, spaces have to be comfortable. And it needs to be interesting. I think we have most of that. I think the safety issue though is going to be key as we look at developing our bike lanes and our walking areas, et cetera, to make sure that that's.
Well, if we were just walking, we have it perfect. If we was just riding, we got, but we're trying to do a whole bunch of stuff. I mean, we have a great trail, everybody knows that. And if you was just on one or the other, we're done. But we're trying to do both and that's what complicates it a little bit and gives us, has our work still cut out for us, you know? But, but again, I was very proud to be there at Punta Gorda and I was very proud when I really realized what Howard and his staff's been doing all these years. I mean, I knew they, I knew that it was doing, but I realized there's a big picture for this. There's a lot bigger reason that a few of us own dogs and a few of us have bicycles. I mean, there's, there's a lot bigger picture to the whole thing.
That's why you got the big raise today.
But besides that, I had to leave earlier. They were, I'm actually somehow got volunteered to be in charge of the Chaney Brothers Grand Alpi tomorrow. So I've been running back and forth all morning, placing porta potties and important stuff, you know. So I'm going to run back over there.
We'll see you over there. Yes, thank you for being here. And thank you for being with us at the symposium. Appreciate it very much.
And the whole thing is on YouTube. The whole video.
The whole video.
The whole video, 14 minutes. Mitchell, our videographer, how many hats do you have now? That's another one.
I was still hoping that they would have all of the speakers that they had at the symposium on, on video.
They should, yeah.
They should. I need to make sure next year that our legislative delegation doesn't schedule their meeting that day.
Right, we should have told them they needed to move it.
I know.
Well, thank you. And thank you, Howard, for, and thank you to Mikhail.
Yes.
Mitchell, you put together a wonderful slideshow.
Yes, they did.
They represented us well. They made us look really good.
I think it should be required viewing on every Allegiant flight.
There you go.
Now we're getting a little careless.
All right, are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Our city attorney.
Yeah, I can't top that.
Our city clerk. And we move first to our city clerk's evaluation. And Karen has been moving forward on her certification as a city clerk, official city clerk. So she's been doing a good job on that. Her overall total score at a 40 is 34.73. And again, as mentioned before, the staff, as part of our budget process, the city council has authorized a 2.3% market adjustment and up to 3% merit pay for all employees who met or exceeded performance expectations. Questions, comments?
I'd like to make a recommendation to approve that raise for Karen, retroactive on the 27th.
Take a day.
The 28th, between the 25th and the 30th.
Case that changed.
No, the 20, 28th.
Yeah, I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the 5.3% increase for Karen Smith, effective September 28th. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And thank you, Karen. Thank you for all your good work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. And I, I had some really good conversations. And I appreciate all the feedback and keep moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we now have boards and committees?
Boards and committees. Starting with vacancies. For the Historic Preservation Advisory Board, we have two three-year terms as alternates and two three-year terms as regular members.
Are any of those people going to rerun? Do you know yet?
Both.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Good.
Thank goodness. Okay. Also, under vacancies, we have a continuing vacancy for a two-year term on the firefighters' pinche board. We have a three-year term on the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Advisory Committee. Moving to nominations, we have a three-year term as an alternate on the Board of Zoning Appeals. We do just have one nominee at this time. If you would like to nominate and appoint.
Nominate and appoint.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Also, under nominations, we have two three-year terms on the Code Enforcement Board. We have seven eligible applicants for nomination.
Nominate all.
Thank you. Okay, under appointments. Get my voting forms here. Okay, we have a three-year term on the Code Enforcement Board as an alternate. And your voting forms are coming.
Is your watch bossing you around again?
Yeah.
It's calling for a recess.
Calling for lunch, probably.
We have a tie.
How do we have a tie there?
How do we have a tie?
Five of us.
That is true.
We had a tie last time.
That is true.
Cause there's so many, two and two and one?
No, let me, must've been stuck together.
Uh-oh, good.
You can have a tie if there's more than two people.
You can still have it, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, it's...
That's true. That, I apologize. Last week, we had a tie and we said we would wait. That's where we were. I apologize.
And the appointee is Vincent Flanzo.
I'm just all ready with my extra forms to break the tie. Okay. Also, under appointments, we have building board alternate. I'm just voting for one.
We do have a tie on this one between Ms., I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce it. E-D-O-Ja?
It's Edope, Edopa.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at her. It's, the first name is Badoop.
Yep.
Edioga.
Thank you. And Timothy Meyer.
All right. So on, these are just going to be blank forms. You want to just write building for the boarding committee. That would define your name and then the person's
And the appointee is Timothy Meyer.
That's all I have. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And again, thank you to all the individuals who have put their names in for our committees. We're very, very grateful. Excellent group of people who are willing to work on, as a volunteer, again, on behalf of our city. We now move to policy and legislation. I just want to remind everyone that we are just so excited that we'll have our Vietnam Wall Memorial groundbreaking on November 11th at 4:00 PM at Lashley Park. Very, very excited. There'll be a number of dignitaries, including Governor Rick Scott, along with Congressman Rooney. So y'all come down, come and see our, our new area where we're going to put our Vietnam Memorial. One of the things that also came out of the meeting, as I was leaving and rushing back to get to the legislative delegation, I was accosted by a number of council members from, not Bonita.
Astero.
Astero, thank you, from Astero. Very nice costume, by the way. But they were very thankful of our sending them our materials that we had done on sea level rise. And said that they are working now with FGCU to develop a similar kind of compact that they have on the southeast coast and southwest. And so I passed along Joan LeBeau's name, and Joan has been in contact with them. And they will keep us informed now as they move forward. They're trying to determine, you know, how it was done and on the other coast and so that we can again focus on what we're doing. Of course, I offered them to come to Punta Gorda, but they'll probably stay at FGCU. But they're also going to be offering classes and things like that, educational programs regarding it. So that's, that's real, that's excellent. I had passed along to you also, I had, based on a resident's request about committee structure and whether our committees required or needed to require people who lived in Punta Gorda, actual landowners in Punta Gorda, or could it also be business people who worked in Punta Gorda. And so she had provided all of that information. So that might come up on your radar again in the future, but just wanted to have you with that information. Before I forget, I did want to share with you, now nobody's here to see it, but this was a photo that David Sussman did of our city hall with a, isn't it lovely?
Wonderful.
Beautiful.
And he gave this as a gift to me, but I don't have any wall space. So I was thinking that this would be wonderful for our administrative building. And we'll get it nicely framed.
Isn't that beautiful now?
Thank you.
Isn't that beautiful?
That's gorgeous.
That's a beautiful picture.
It's very pretty.
Can you sign it?
Oh, I'm not gonna sign it.
You need to sign it down.
Will you put on there donated by Karen?
Okay, okay. Well, I was thinking a little plaque or whatever. You know, they do that on nice, on nice pictures.
There we go.
But that might be nice. And tomorrow, we have, tomorrow, Thursday, the homecoming parade.
The Chaney Brothers.
The Chaney Brothers and the homecoming parade. So lots of activities. And again, just thank you all for all you have done to help make our city so much better. It's been a pleasure, pleasure working with all of you. I would not be on this council for another two, after the last two years if it wasn't fun. And it's been fun. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Nancy?
I have one thing. I just wanted to, I know we've talked about it earlier in this meeting, but the OCAM team is working on the recommendation. And we're planning on making, having it on the agenda in the first or second meeting in December. We will be talking with a few community people just to test the waters on some things. So if you get, you know, people talking to you, don't think it's because, you know, we didn't come to you first because we're trying to test the waters a little bit on what we might bring to you. And then if some, we might have some members come and talk to you individually before that time, but it certainly won't be me. And, and the feedback that they provide can't be shared with me. So everything will be done according to the sunshine law. So anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Carolyn, again. Thank you. Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate it. Ken?
Just as an aside, I was invited last week to go with the TDC to their ad agency in St. Pete. And they have decided, well, they're going to put before the commission to do an official branding of Charlotte County, which would be a Punta Gorda Inglewood type of thing. So you might want to get together with, you probably are getting together with them. But there was lots and lots of information from there. I, I learned a whole lot about actually what they are doing and how they are marketing and how they get their information. And really, we are above, you know, our hotels and that type of thing are really above the area, you know, even Fort Myers and Sarasota. So...
We're working with Laura is working with us. So I think she's also expressed some concerns. She wants to make sure that we're not perceived by Visit Florida as trying to be tourism. And I said, no, 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 we're marketing. So she's working with us on that.
Another thing I wanted to just bring to your attention, because you might hear about it. I attended the Tribune Woods United Association meeting this week. They invited me. And it was great. I, everyone is working together. It was really a good vibe. I, lots of information. They're doing lots of good things. But one request they made of me, since the mural is being taken down on the annex building, they were wondering if we would consider putting up the mural of the actual signers of the incorporation of the city, which includes four African-Americans. And they felt very strongly about that and also indicated that it, it had been brought up before when the mural was going there. I don't know. I talked to Howard about it and David. We did call Ron Norcell. He said the artist has been hired. He's ready to go. He thinks that that mural, that incorp, the signers of the incorporation papers is a very significant mural. And we talked about possibly finding a place at Hector House, which is where that all happened. But I wanted you to know, because I think they feel strong, and, and I think it's a very significant mural also. And so you might get some questions about that. So I wanted to let you know that that was out there.
Thank you. Thank you. Tom?
I'd just like to say one more time, Carolyn, thank you for your leadership this past year. I think it was an essential component of where we are today.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Your job?
Yes, I was in Washington DC. And it was a very exciting time because that, we were right there when Kevin McCarthy was having that press conference, taking his name out of the hat for, and we were actually in Webster's office earlier. And it was crazy down there too. So it was a little odd, but it was exciting. And we were up front and close and personal with all of that. So the people in the group that are like the political junkie people, they were having a really good time. It was very successful. We met with probably 15 different representatives. And we met with the White House intergovernmental staff, FEMA. And we had, on our agenda, which was in the weekly report last, last week, our agenda was FEMA and de-obligations and helping cities figure out how to navigate the system after the audits and things are done with the, with the funds. A lot of the east coast cities talked to the representatives about sober homes, which is similar to what we had with the Charah House situation. It's, it's really prevalent on the east coast. We also talked about keeping municipal bonds tax-free, which it seemed like there was pretty, pretty broad support for that. So the overall agenda was good and it was, we felt very welcomed and heard and it was very nice. So there were probably 30 people, some, there were some duplicates from different cities. The closest by us would have been Venice. There was somebody there from Venice. So, and then Bradenton. So I really was the only one there from southwest Florida. So that was important.
Thank you for representing us.
Sure. It was interesting. It was a whirlwind, interesting.
I'm glad we were, I'm glad that we were included.
Yes. And Tom Rooney's office was so nice. They took us on a tour, a walking tour through the Capitol and the underground and got on the little Willy Wonka train thing underneath there. You have to be with a staff member to be able to do that. So they came and found us. And they were, they really, you know, showed, well, some of the other people were previously in Tom Rooney's district before it got redrawn. So their loss is our gain. So they were like, oh, okay. So they came to find us and took us on that tour. And they really showed us a nice time and were attentive, even though Tom wasn't there. Which, that night, the Pirates were playing that playoff game. So I had a feeling he might have been in Pittsburgh. But I'm not, I didn't verify that. I didn't ask. Oh, the memorabilia in his office is just unbelievable. I mean, the stuff in his office is just, a lot of their offices are really fancy, but his is really, really nice. A lot of stuff in there. The other thing I wanted to announce is that, yeah, can you put the Elmo up? On Halloween night, which is a week from Saturday, we're having our second annual trunk or treat put on, volunteer and put on by the city employees on their own time and own dime. We're having our trunk or treat over there in the city hall annex in the parking area. And this is just a taste of what you're going to see.
Looks good.
At our trunk or treat.
Looks wonderful.
So it's 6:00 to 9:00, Halloween night. Come by. We need candy for all of you out there in viewing land. Bring Mikhail candy. And it's going to be really fun.
Thank you. And thank you for orchestrating that again. Really appreciate the employees doing it. Last year, it was so fun. I mean, could not recognize a lot of people like, and you do work for the city? Scary people down there. Very scary, very scary. If there's nothing else here, any citizens' comments?
Steve Fagan, just a real quick update. If everything goes well, we will be closing on phase two of the Radis the first week in December.
Wow, congratulations.
And if that happens, we will then simultaneously continue phase two right with, so it's going to save us a lot of money too.
Wonderful.
Thank you for your support.
Long overdue.
Thank you, Steve.
I've lost my audience. Ray Rose, PGI. Suggestion, take the U Tube 14-minute clip and put it on the, either the weekly report or your individual letters as they come out to us. I think a lot of people would welcome it. Speaking as the PGI rep, Sunday, 9:00 to 1:00, we are having our open house, celebrating 10 years since we opened the building. You're invited to attend. There'll be kind of a ceremony at 2:00, I believe. Look forward to it. You'll see, it only took us 10 years, but I think we meet the landscaping code now. And we were very fortunate during the giving challenge, we raised like $84,000. And we were very fortunate, during the giving challenge, we raised like eighty-four thousand dollars. That is going to be used to expand the capabilities of our building, and when you come out to have your meetings and things, it'll be bigger and better than ever before.
Congratulations.
Carolyn, give him your list, please, on the weeklys.
I definitely will.
Thank you very much, and we will truly miss you, and thank you again.
Thank you, appreciate it, Ray.
Well, sitting through the whole meeting, I had a list of about six, oh, I'm Gary Wine, excuse me, councilperson-elect, I guess you would call me, at this moment, but soon not to be. I had a list of about six things I wanted to address, you're the things, I'm going to cut it down to one. Nothing that can't, the others cannot wait till later. I just want to say to Carolyn that you've set a very high bar for everybody up there, and me soon to be sitting up there, and it's going to be humbling just to be able to go down this adventure. I just want to wish you and Tom the greatest adventures and fill, fill in your bucket list, and I suspect that you are not going to be long without presence in, in the Punta Gorda community as far as the work that you've done, and that I'm sure you'll continue it. The bad news is that it's a loss for the city to lose you on the council. Maybe the worst news is that I'll be replacing that seat. But the good news is that there, as I've gone through my adventure of getting ready to try to, try to fill that seat a little bit, that there's also four other councilmen that are also as dedicated as you've been, and people behind your back speak very well. I just want you to say that. So anyway, that's all it is. Again, best of luck, and I wish you well.
Thank you, Gary, appreciate that very much. And next time, you're up here.
And I don't have to wait till now to say anything.
Everyone, thank you again. Thank you to our wonderful staff. Thank you, Howard, Rachel, Tom.
David.
Kim.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Appreciate it, really do appreciate it. It's been, been wonderful. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.